Okay, thank you. Sorry, we had a little bit of technical difficulty.
It's okay.
I'm going to mute the phone for a little bit, though, because it's a little loud. I'll go ahead and call the Town of Adams Board of Selectment meeting Wednesday, July 22, 2020, to order. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you join me in standing and signing the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Canada, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I do not have my specific language in front of me about meeting virtually according to Mass. General Law. Is it in there?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectment is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meeting as provided for in the order. With us this evening in the room, myself, Board Chair Christine Hoyt; I have a member, John Duval, a member, Rick Blanchard, and a member, Joe Novak. On the call is Vice Chairman Jim Bush. Thank you for joining us, Jim. Also in the room, I should just let you all know, we do have Town Administrator Jay Green, our Administrative Assistant, Deb Dunlap, Chief of, Intern Chief of Police, Troy Bacon, a member of the media from iBertchers.com, which is Jeff Noonian, and we have our auditor, Dave Irwin, who is in the room. On the call, we have, we are at capacity, I believe, in this room. So anybody else who's joining us will have to wait in the hallway, but I think everyone else is calling in. We also have on the call Legal Counsel Ed St. John III, Tax Collector, Treasurer Kelly Wright, and I believe we have two representatives from National Grid. Is that correct?
Brad Middlesworth from National Grid. And with me is Joe Roman from GEI, my environmental consultant.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Jay, can you actually turn up the volume just a little bit on the phone? I'm sorry. We have put a TV in the room, so you are all being seen by everybody. So you're not, so don't make faces unless you would like everybody in this room to see them. It's not just me that will see them. And the other logistical item, I will try to turn my camera to the person who's speaking in this room. It just might be a little bit further away for you to see them, but at least you'll have some kind of contact, some context. Any questions about logistics before we move into any of the items on the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, great. So our first item of business is the approval of minutes. Before us, we do have the minutes from June 17 and June 24. It is my understanding that all members of the board can vote. But it's the board's pleasure.
I will make motion to waive or reading the minutes and approval as provided for June 17 and June 24, 2020.
Okay, I have a motion by, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second by John. Because we do have a remote participation by a board member, all votes will be a roll call vote. So I will start with Joe.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And it is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone on the call or anybody in the room who wishes to speak to the board about a matter that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and move on to new business. And the first item under new business is a, it's the National Grid request for access to Memorial Park for monitoring well decommissioning. Bradford, did you want me to turn this over to you at this point? To talk about it?
Well, I was going to actually turn it over to Joe, but I just wanted to ask if anybody or everybody has gotten a chance to read the access agreement.
So everybody did receive the access agreement as part of their packet. It was actually sent to them electronically from the Town Administrator on Monday before it was placed in their packet. So they have received it, but we'll see if there are any questions or if you wanted to maybe give us an overview, Joseph or Bradford.
Yeah, I think, Joe, it would be worthwhile to give an overview of what's been done at the site and why we're decommissioning the wells now.
Yeah, sure. Joe Roman, again, from GEI. The property in question has been investigated, I think, since the late 1990s from some contaminants associated with the former industrial processes. There was some soil excavation done in the 2000s. Clean soil was placed in the park. And in 2019, a closure report was submitted to Mass. DEP, essentially getting regulatory closure for the conditions at the site. So at this point, the environmental conditions are resolved, and National Grid is looking to decommission the groundwater monitoring wells that are on the town property that were associated with that historic investigation. So essentially, what happens is we contract with a drill rig to, back-mounted drill rig is essentially, looks like a large snowmobile. There is about five wells in the park property at the town. They will go to each well. It's about a two-inch diameter PVC in the ground. They will pull out the PVC piping. They inject a grout, which essentially seals the hole, the formal hole for the well. Then they'll place the top two feet of the hole with soil, and they'll reseed. And that's essentially the decommissioning process. Again, the wells are no longer required. There's no more investigation happening. So this is my last step as far as, you know, closing out those monitoring wells in accordance with the state guidance. And I'll stop there.
I can open it up to any questions or comments from anybody from the board.
Yeah, I got a question. So you mentioned there's five wells located on that property. What is in those wells as of today? I don't think I remember seeing the environmental report that was approved by the state to be able to close these wells. You may have very well seen it, but what is, what is it? Is it just water or what's in these wells right now?
There is residual groundwater in those wells. You know, all the information historically has never had any type of other contaminants like oil or tar or anything like that. It's really been low-level contaminating levels. Nothing that really triggered any remediation for groundwater that was required. It was really just monitoring of the groundwater conditions. Samples were collected over several years to demonstrate that it was a steady state and the conditions were understood. So at this point, it's essentially just groundwater that's in those wells.
Okay. And the last question I have is, in this agreement, it indicates that any damage to the property, National Grid will pay for any damage, which I'm sure we won't see, but any damage by the employees. Is there like a, after the few days that this is done or is a meeting with the town to ensure that both agree that no damage has been done to the property in regards to ruts in the grass or anything?
Yeah, I think after we, after we complete the work, we'll need to have somebody come by from the town and take a look at it and make sure that it was all receded to your liking.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you, John. Other questions, comments? Anything else on this, either from Bradford or Joseph or Jay?
The other thing I was going to say is the timing of this would be, well, right now, we've submitted a permit to the DCR. If you notice along the rail trail where the rail car goes down, there's, Joe, three or four wells that stand up. The ones on the Memorial Park are flush mounted with the ground. But if you notice, if you walk down that rail trail, you'll see some pipes sticking up. So we're trying to coordinate the approval from DCR. We have submitted the application. And once we get that approval, then we'll coordinate with everybody and we'll get the work done.
Okay. There's no other comments or questions. I am looking for approval from the board.
I'll make a motion. The board approved the access agreement. The access to Memorial Park is provided.
Okay. I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by John. Is there any discussion?
Just one more question as a result of the last statement. So I do know, I've seen those pipes coming out of the ground. So these five wells are going to be sealed while the piping still continue to come out. Will we still see piping from the ground?
No.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, again, it is a roll call vote. All in favor, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. I want to thank Bradford and Joseph for joining us to walk us through that and providing the access agreement in enough time for us to review it. And you're more than welcome to continue on as we listen to our audit, but we will not be offended if you sign off at this point.
I smell dinner.
Oh, lucky.
One more thing. Could you, could you email the signed copy to me? The original, you can send it to the address on the cover letter. That's my home address. Everybody's working from home now, obviously.
Yep, we will mail you the original to that address, and then you'll receive an email from Deb Dunlap.
Right. And then we'll, and we'll counter sign and send it back to you.
Okay, that sounds great.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Excellent. That brings us to the second item on the agenda. And that is a presentation of the fiscal '19 audit. With us this evening is Dave Irwin. Dave is a CPA with Atkinson &amp; Company. He's been before the board, I think it's been almost three years since you've been here. But you have provided us a management letter, which is in everyone's packet. When Dave arrived, he gave us some data analytical information. And she's on a copy of the financial statements if you should need that printed. Deb is happy to do that. I do have it so that I can show it up on the screen. So if you need to refer to something, I'll do my best. I'll try to be your text person. And Dave, I'm going to ask you to speak up so that Ed and Jim and Kelly can hear you. And I'm going to turn things over to you at this point.
Okay. So as Christine mentioned, we've audited your fiscal year in June 30, 2019 year. And in your access, let's try and see your in-person hearing. I should have a copy of the audited financial statements. A thicker copy, it's 15 long pieces of length. You won't go page by page, I promise. But anyway, these are the audited financial statements for your 2019 year. So I'm just going to do 15 minutes overview of the audit, talk about the things that we do, some of the informed statements that are part of your financial statements. So if you want to turn to page 3 of the audited financial statements, it's a letter, it's an independent auditor's report at the top. This is the opinion on your financial statements for the 2019 year. So this is really what you're paying our office to produce. The first paragraph points out that we audited your 2019 year. Second paragraph points out that management here at the town is responsible for making sure the financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted economic principles, which they are. The third and the fourth paragraph point out our responsibility as your auditor, that we're the independent of the town, we're to conduct the audit in accordance with auditing standards that govern our industry, and because we receive federal funding and state funding, we're to conduct these audits in accordance with government auditing standards, which holds our firm to a higher level of understanding and education. And because the town also did receive federal expenditures that were more than $750,000, we also had to perform a review of the audit in accordance with the federal standards, the uniform standards is what they refer to. The top of page 4 is a summary of the opinion that we put on your financial statements. So we have two sets of, two bases of accounting that are running for your financial statements. The first set of financial statements is the government-wide financial statements that reports everything on the town's assets, infrastructure, and all that stuff on a full, cool basis of account. So we're recognizing fixed assets on your balance sheet. We're recognizing your portioned share of the pension system that you're involved in. We're putting on a liability for your promise to your employees for offering them ultimate benefits in retirement years. So that's the full, cool basis of account. Now, we were unable to issue a clean opinion on your full government-wide basis financial statements strictly because one of the numbers on your balance sheet comes from a portioned share of the pension system in the Town of Adams. We're approximately 50% of that pension system. The pension system does not undergo an audit. There is certain statements that an independent auditor has to do with auditing the pension system that we have to be able to get. Without that information, the AICPA and the Governmental Accounting Standards Board says that I, your auditor, does not have enough information to verify the validity of the accounting estimate for that. And if not, and if that, I cannot issue a clean opinion on your government-wide financial statements. Also included in your financial statements are funded financial statements, which show your balance sheet and your income statement in line with pretty much how you budget. Revenues, cash in, expenses are cash out, whether you're paying a debt payment or whether you're buying a fixed asset, it all shows a business that we have to budget. We were able to perform all of our audit procedures, and we were able to issue what's called an unmodified opinion on those statements, meaning we didn't have to make any modification to your financial statements in order to present being before any of the general economic principles, which is the same thing as being a clean audit opinion. Okay? So the disclaimer of opinion is an important issue. Not only does it impact the Town of Adams, what is the Adams-Cheshire Regional School District has to qualify their financial statements because of this issue, and the Adams Fire Department is issued too. So I've issued a management, for a couple of years in a row, kind of stressing the importance of having the pension system get that audit done. I know that the Adams Fire Department reached out. I'm sure that the Adams-Cheshire, I just kind of urged the town and trying to get that audit done for this upcoming year, the top or the next year, if it works out that way. So anyways, so that's kind of the most important piece inside your audit and financial statements.
So could I ask your question?
Yes.
Okay. That we asked for the paperwork from the retirement group, and we did not receive it, or is there an audit that needs to be placed in order to be able to generate paperwork you need?
That is, you're correct. There is an audit that needs to take place over the pension system by an independent CPA who performs full-scale pension system audits. So that is what needs to take place. And based on that information that that auditor produces, I take certain pieces of that, I'm going to use that as my audit documentation to validate the pension liability that we have on your government-wide balance sheet.
So I'll take responsibility, part responsibility for this because you've mentioned in past reports, right? I've been the past chair. So is it Town Administrator, is it? I'm just wondering, why didn't we, why didn't we do that? That would just, it's not, so.
It's the independent attorney for it.
Yeah, the board, that board needs to.
Make their decision.
I understand, okay.
Oh, yes. And that's a very important point. A pension system is their own separate legal identity.
Right.
They're responsible for saying yes or no to getting that audit.
Okay, so have they, have they been asked? Is any, so?
They have been asked. There was a letter that did come from the pension board, I believe I don't have a written, sorry, kind of outlined their reasons to why they're not going to get the audit, the decision that they had made.
Okay, so is there, just the last question. Is there any other, so we did not get the approval, not approval, but the recommendation, whatever it may be, from your auditing firm, only what, a clean opinion? So what are the impacts?
It's a combination of the pension liability, even about people who have liability. Their financial statements for years has just only been included in the notes to the financial statements. So the bond-raising companies, anybody that's lending you money or making a decision to give you grants has always known that information. Information's always been there. In the last two years, Dave, or whatever the number might have been, said that, okay, enough is enough. We want to pull that information out of the note, and we want to put it right on your balance sheet and make it as transparent as possible. And basically, all that stuff came around when a lot of the information came out when we worked about all the pension systems being underfunded. And not, and not potential, what it paid to us. They've been, get it out of the notes. We've always had it there for years and years and put it on the balance sheet to make it as affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question right now. I asked about our pension system a while back, and we took a bad hit. We lost millions recently. So I really wish that they would have come forward and did something so. We didn't see, because we've always had a really strong town pension system in the Town of Adams. And the investments they made, I just think that they were a kind of a, I'll say, they were getting out of this, you know? I mean, we lost, what was it, nine million, was it? That was something in that aspect. Yep. Yep, so.
The other, the other point, too, Dave, you might want to make as well, I know there was change in leadership. And not leaving out these reasons as to why they did and did not. I'm just telling you the impact to your town financial statements. You're paying me to do your audit, and I can't put a clean opinion out of it, for one reason. I think the town should be a little bit more aggressive and try and make a bigger way of funding that audit to get it done, so we can get a clean opinion. So it's important, you know? I think it's important. Okay. I'm sorry, that was probably, oh.
Here's the question.
Okay. There's other information inside your audited financial statements that we do reference in our audit opinion that is supplementary in nature, is not required to be there, but the town has always felt that it's important to include that information. Specifically, the schedule of your taxes received from outstanding at the end of the year and a schedule of where your cash is and which bank holds it. We do include that information in your financial statements and request that we audit that information and we issue a clean opinion on that information as well. So we don't have any issues with that. Okay? So let's move into the financial statements, the two pages. There's a section, six dash 13. We're going to bypass that information. That's the management discussion and analysis. That is a narrative crafted by your internal management, the Community Development Director of your Town of Compton, Jay, crafted information that summarizes some of the projects that are ongoing and that have an impact on the town's finances. But all of that is going to be laid out when I go over the numbers. So let's move to page seven, and it says, Statement of Position. Okay? But this is your balance sheet at June 30, 2019. This is full of cool basis of accounting. Okay, this follows the Yadda B34 model that came out years ago. Cash at the end of the year was 7.1 million. We're about $2 million more in cash than where we typically would be at this point in time, but there's a reason for that. During the fiscal year, the town borrowed $2.5 million for, to help pay for some stores that came through and did a lot of damage. By June 30, 2019, the town had already spent about $435,000 of that project. So there's $2 million that was carried over into fiscal '20 to carry on that project. So that's why we're sitting a little bit higher than cash levels at June 30, 2019. Tax is receivable, $550,000. That's your real estate tax. That's your personal property tax, which you want to be collect side tax, minus an allowance for potential uncollectibles. We approximately estimate anywhere between 18% and maybe 20% allowance for uncollectibles. That's, we do that in order to have full, cool, gap-based financial statements. That estimate is consistent from one year to the next. Nothing to discuss on that. The tax wings, the taxes for the delinquent taxpayers that have been put into the tax title process are over $1 million at the high end. You go back to 2015, and that number was just the opposite. We had all these delinquent taxpayers sitting in, they're tax receivable, and property tax title account was small. Well, the good thing is that your treasure, your tax collector there has been doing a very good job of cleaning up the receivable list, getting those old delinquent taxpayers off the accounts receivable list and getting them into the tax title. And now we're in the process, I know that the treasurer is in the process of making sure that that people that are willing to pay their taxes are being aggressively gone after, so forth. And in 2019, even though we have $1 million available, sorry, I didn't think of it. No, here, just want to tell you, because it's important, because it shows you the effort that the town was making on trying to collect that tax. I've got too much paper. Sorry. So for 2019, $239,000 was added to the tax title process. The town tax, treasure debt collector worked at collecting $159,000. So there's definite movement. And then I had, I talked with Kelly before the meeting here the other day, and I asked her for the outstanding receivable balance in the tax title account, and it's down a net $35,000 from that $130,000. I don't know how much it went up and how much it went down. I just know that that dropped. But we do focus a lot of attention on that as your auditor every year. We should follow up with questions. So anyways, that is it for the tax titles. There's some other receivables that are on the books. No issues with those. They're fully collectible and probably all in the title at this point here. Fixed assets, $17.3 million. That's the cost of what we paid for all of our buildings, all of our improvements, all of our vehicles. Any other assets the town may have for the Department of Public Works or anything like that. Less a few of the depreciation, wear and tear, a spreading back that costs over the useful life of all those assets. Okay, that is net $17 million. Obviously, the cost is much higher. Accumulation depreciation is also much higher. We have that detailed as a note for the financial statements. The town did make a big investment in fixed assets in 2019. The tax, the renovation that leads to the station, the library, and we also filed for the sewer treatment plant. So we have, those are regular. We confirmed all those balances. Debt payments are being made, so we don't have any issues with that. Now, let's get to the two big numbers. The net pension liability, $8,984,000. So the net pension liability. Under goes actuary evaluation, kind of like an audit, from the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission. And they produce an actuary calculation, they perk it out, but they feel that that potential obligation is to all the retirees and by the... Taking into a bunch of factors, discount all back to today's dollars. Then they subtract from that the total value of the assets that are actually in the pension system. Our proportionate share of that net pension liability, which means the unfunded piece, is about eight point nine million dollars. So, without that independent audit from an independent VBA producing certain schedules that I need from them, I'm able to really put a clean opinion on that number. And that number is material to your, to the government-wide financial statements, okay? So, that is the driving reason behind all that. I do have information disclosed in the notes, there's probably about ten pages worth of notes for these, this net pension liability. Then the post-apointed benefits other than pensions, thirteen million dollars. Again, we contrast with an actuary. They look at all the people that are going to be using that benefit between now and the future for all the retirees and your future retirees and they determine what's the potential payout obligation for paying health insurance for all of our retirees. They look at us thirty years out, it's all back to three thousand dollars, it's a different thing and that. Okay, we get a copy of that report, we look at it, we look at the, how they determine their actuary calculation and we just have any issues with it. Okay, now, with those two liabilities, I know this a lot. With those two liabilities, we have these two new categories on your balance sheet called deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources. And you can see it's deferred outflows related to that pension calculation. Deferred inflows related to the pension in the OPEC calculation. Those two categories are strictly a mechanism because when the actuary performs your calculations, a big... But it's based on accounting estimate. And that accounting estimate has gone on thirty years. So, a change in the accounting estimate from six thirty eighteen to six thirty nineteen can give material swing, especially if a one percentage change on a discount rate. So, the deferred outflow and the deferred inflow is a mechanism that allows us to part a piece of that calculation so that we don't have material swing on your income statement from year to year. So, we're smoothing out that actuary's change in their estimates because it's looking at long-term population to begin with. That is very analytical. Then in the management, then in the notes, and one number should come to you from your statement. They kind of confuse the situation. Okay, total assets, minus the total liabilities is your deposition of the town. I want to focus on one number. Unrestricted deficit, negative fifteen point seven million. That's not the number that the town has available to itself for budgeting and running town operations, okay? The reason of that deficit is because we had to put eight million dollars of net pension liability accounting estimate on your books and an accounting estimate for the OPEC liability of thirteen million. That's why that number is down, okay? This is full of cool GAAP thirty-four to make sure that we comply with GAAP. Now, we're gonna look at a balance sheet that's close, that's easier to print out. Your balance sheet from your accounting system, we're more closely reselling the number to make that up. So, let's turn to page nine.
Can I ask you a quick question first? So, you mentioned the pension liability, I understand that. What about the OPEC? Why is that, you have a concern about that?
And no, that's concerned about the reverse.
Well, we understand that for the pension, we have to have an audit performed for the OPEC. So, you have that there, you're concerned about that. We were, we've been told for several years that we need to prepare as a community for the rising cost of OPEC. And we have not done that.
Yes, no, that's...
So...
Yes, very good question. All right, so I'm looking at. So, the health insurance that you build into your budget every year is health insurance for your regular employees and for your retirees. So, you're covering your health insurance other pay as you go back, right? The town has put a little bit of money aside for this obligation, I want to say five hundred fifty thousand. But the town has always missed its obligation to pay health insurance for its retirees and obviously for its regular employees every time you set the actuary, the tax and every other resource that comes through. The one reason they, you might be thinking as to why that we need an independent audit over the pension system and not an independent audit over the OPEC? The OPEC belonged one hundred percent to the town of Adams. Right? The main issue was just driving those best practice schedules that I need out of the pension system is because the town of Adams is not a lion shareholder of that pension system. We're only fifty percent. So, there's other employers in the, I should have spoken the word cost sharing multiple employer pension plan where we all belong fifty percent, so fifty percent belongs to us. That's one of the primary basis reasons. Not that you need to know this, but if you were to go and look at the Pittsburgh's financial statements, that, that issue is not, in their financial statement, their pension system is huge. But the city of Pittsburgh is a ninety-six percent owner of that pension system. It's their employees, probably running through as much as our employees.
Okay, great, thank you for the information.
Yeah, okay. David, very good question.
Yes, we've been fortunate, our employee health insurance has stayed stable. And I just worry sooner or later they're gonna ask for an increase. And that's something that we have to be prepared for. I'm not sure, how many years has it stayed standard three about?
Five or six.
Yeah, so that's...
It's important to know that the number, that thirteen million on your balance sheet is an accounting estimate. It is ninety, it is one hundred percent driven by actuary estimate on whether somebody's gonna retire and use it at discount rate and all these other different types, types of things that they look into. So, a one percentage point swing, plus or minus, and that actuary's calculation, if they use a discount rate of four percent instead of five percent, could you take a million dollars off that number or add a million dollars to the number? It's an accounting estimate to kind of give you an idea of what your possible obligation is. But the town has never missed paying for its health insurance and with issues coming up with health insurance may increase or decrease, if that's what happens to be the case, it will really come into play when you set your collection for your town.
David, it's probably not that they need to have this conversation, but now that I'm back in the municipal world, it was brought to my attention that Pittsburgh, North Adams and Adams are the only independent retirement systems in the county. Everyone else, every other municipality...
They have a lot of the first kind of retirement system.
Yeah, yeah, so I would be curious at some point, I don't, I don't know if you're the person to have this trip, but I think from our perspective, we would be curious to know what advantages does a town like Adams have that remain in a pension system? Yeah, or is there advantage to joining a greater pool? Because as Joe's point, we totally hit on those investments. But yet, if we increase the pool, you know, we spread our funds out into a greater pool, that's a more protection to weather the natural ups and downs of the market. And I just, I'm not equipped enough with that.
That is a conversation you'd have to have with the pension system. And these pension systems are governed by national law. So, there's a lot of things that will come into play just to move Adams. So, and especially if you're looking at the emerging systems. And that's well out of my area of expertise, I can deal with the accounting. But I can, and I will be very...
It just seems to be, you know, from my perspective, I'll, I'll close with this for time. We're a, we're a small town and it just seems to me that that's something that we spend time discussing, but yet, we're, we're the only one still on our own, they have our city, city charter.
Yes, no, that's a very good point. I do have disclosed in the notes of the financial statements, if you don't need to turn it. I don't know if you can look for it, and I'm sure you'd know it anyways. At twelve thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, okay, we're always six months behind. Two months, fiscal year June thirty, the pension system, Adams pension system was a calendar year December thirty-one. So, we're always gonna be six months behind including Gary's issues with that financial statements. At December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, the total pension liability, the gross whole, the gross actuarially determined obligation was fifty point three million dollars. Total assets at that point in time in their investment account was thirty-two point four million, okay? So, the net pension liability unfunded amount was seventeen point nine million. Our fifty percent portion of that is that eight million, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Now, as the town of Adams, your treasurer has fiduciary responsibility over those assets in the system, which is why we also include those assets in a fiduciary statement as I do audit it financially statements. So, we do, do work over those pension assets, we confirm the balances, we do a lot of tracing. If you look at the members coming in, the members going out, we take samples and stuff like that. But unfortunately, we don't do enough work to be able to open the, the pension liability side of it. We only do a number of over the asset side of it. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna turn to one more page and then I promise we'll stop. Page twelve. No issues with revenues, no issues with expenses. Revenues are reported in the proper categories, expenses are reported in the proper categories. We pull a lot, we trace a lot, all the invoices, all the payroll and H P warrant, the proper services on that. So, all the proper protocol that you guys have in place and following national law, we didn't have any issue. So, testing and internal controls is fine. I do have one management letter comment, which I'll talk about just a minute. Okay, this is, page twelve is your budgetary statement. So, this looks at the budget that you pass and it compares it to how we set it in the month. It's always easy to come in more revenues and budgets, they help our pre-gas position. So, you can see the budget variance is a positive variance of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for our revenues. The expenses, we know, national law does not allow us to spend anything. We have to abide by the strength of the budget, where the exception is so nice that's it. But we didn't have that issue here, so we don't worry about that. Do rule the twenty twenty again. But the general expenditures, the usual general government, community development expenditures, you look far at home. None of it's negative, it's all positive, which means we did not have any debt spending, which means your budget kept their, kept their spend, kept their spending to the limits, or under the limit in this case here. And these amounts are actually able to be returned to unlisted native fund balance or free cash. So, it's very good, okay? So, two thousand and nineteen, no issues with that. The rest of the financial statements, they kind of lay out your accounting principles, how we record the revenues, how we record the expense, expenses, how we recognize depreciation expense. There is a schedule that talks about your receivables. You don't need to turn to it, but I'll turn to it real quick, I want to show you one number because it's important. It's on page forty-two, one to turn. Real estate taxes, for the two thousand and nineteen year, the commitment was ten million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. That was the commitment done by the investors in the town. We collected ten point two million dollars in that assessment. That's a ninety-six percent collection rate, that's fantastic. And then I looked at your collection rate for nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, fifteen and fifteen. Ninety-six, ninety-five percent across the board, very good job of collecting taxes. We had some old cleanup that went back many years that we got out of the receivables and put it into the tax title process, that's a different issue. But at least over the last five years, you guys haven't had any issues with that, so very good. Personal property tax, we got a tax commitment of six hundred and fifty-five thousand, we collected six hundred and fifty-one thousand. Ninety-nine percent collection rate, very good. More vehicle left side of the tax, slightly different, you know, this is same across, it's about every municipality. Eighty-five percent collection rate, so it's not bad, but we have big collect, you know, amounts in the future. So, very good, collecting on your receivables and doing your processes. So, we didn't have a single audit, we tested certain expenditures in accordance with the federal guidelines. No issues, we issued a clean opinion. This report was submitted to the Office of Management and Budget and no issues there. Okay, that's important. Okay, management letter. The five-page document. We only do advantage one issue. There's a difference between a management letter comment, which kind of just brings the information out to the board or town managers and handles, kind of improves, we can do a little bit better job next year versus the findings which would show up in your audit and findings, findings of that. Management letter comments are good, you know, they kind of point out things that aren't working there. That is what they could be, but make some improvements. We had no findings, we only had a management letter comment. We just kind of went, you know, we wrote into the documents that we select for testing and we look at their internal controls, their collection of the cash and the turnover of the cash that the town tax collectors. And we felt as though there could be some control that could be tightened there, maybe some of the cash we turned over a little bit sooner. Nothing ever came up in regards to missing cash, so nothing like that. We just felt and saw that, hey, let's do a turnover process a little bit quicker. Let's get a formal document in place that's uniform for every department to use. So, I did talk about that with the town accountant, with Jay. And they were working on, you know, coming up with that, a written policy and a formalized form that could be used. And obviously, that will be included in our text, it's so funny about it, okay? The GATV can release a standard that is not gonna go until, back until fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So, it's not this audit, but it'll be the next audit. Managers fully aware of the GATV content, deals with leases. That we got our four leases on the balance sheet with an offsetting obligation. And we'll deal more with that in fiscal twenty and anticipation of fiscal twenty-one. So, we're still a little bit away from that. And then the last management letter comment, just tell them, I know you guys had that deal with that cyber attack. So, we had that management letter comment about making sure all your back processes are working fine and that you have that insurance policy, which you do have, and they were very good that you had that. So, outside of that, there is none. We had no issues working with your management. They're not maintaining the books. The town treasurer did a very good job of questioning this stuff, all this stuff that we asked for, we got. There was no time delay or anything in regards to that. I do know that we had to lay in reporting due because of, you know, the COVID nineteen stuff. But going through the audit was very good here. I did hand off the management stuff, which I'm not very bored at this point. But it gives you your treasury, your free cash. And it kind of gives some definitions on where you should be, you know, free cash if you find fifteen percent of your budget, your unlisted native fund balance, you probably follow the same thing. Free cash, little, little lights right now, if it's more than five percent, if it's five point seven, five percent, we might get people free cash, maybe a little bit higher. But that's how you're gonna get through your ring rates, you know? So, five and fifteen percent, that would work kind of reckoning that. And your statement base was two point seven percent of your fund balance. It's a steadily increasing over the last five years. We were one point four percent back in two thousand and fifteen, we're two point seven seven percent. We want that number upwards of more than five percent and greater, you know, between five and fifteen, but I think it's coming from the north of the town. So, this that. And I do know that we're improving our position with the gap that we're taxing now, you know, we can't tax that. So, it was very likely to see that gap widening a little bit. If you're back in two thousand and fifteen, twenty seventeen, that gap was almost zero. So, we've expanded that gap. So, management's done a good job, we'll report, you know, the revaluation process always helps with that. And that's it, I know what I'm saying. Audit was very good. So, the big issue is, see if you can't work with the retirement system and OPEC, just gotta get that audit, get the three entities. Us, Adams Fire District and the other stretch of school district, they got clean ahead of them. It is important to note, though, I have full disclosure, the audit is not required in accordance with national law. So, the pension system is not asking an audit. Obviously, not having your audit is kind of hindered us, we get a clean opinion. But to John's point, it's not gonna have a negative impact and we're not gonna be able to borrow any. Or it's gonna, or on maybe it's gonna decrease, so I don't think that will matter.
Do you know, the chair, sorry, do you know, do a pension audit, is it, does it cost much more than the majority? Town audit, I wonder why as many, because we're gonna find out why as many, we have three entities that are pulled together, but...
I think cost probably has a lot to do with it. And I think money has to do with it, every contract keeps a sign, no matter what it's for. I think cost is probably one of the primary pieces. I don't know how much it would cost if you asked me my personal opinion on a range. I would think to do a pension audit, full scope pension audit, and they're high-risk audit. I just weren't audited to do it because there's heightened oversight by the AICPA for independent auditors just to do these audits. But I would say you're probably, the pension system's probably looking somewhere around a twenty thousand dollar range. So, it's a significant cost to a pension system, especially when you want to keep... So it's a significant cost to a pension system, especially when you wanna keep your retirement. But that doesn't mean that the town couldn't compromise and keep the audit fee outside of the pension system, let's be shared amongst the three entities that actually need that audit. I mean, the pension system needs an audit too. Audits are a very good tool for management to ensure that the pension workers do their job, right? And that management, just like, hey, me, I'm not, I don't, I'm not auditing management, I'm auditing the entities, reports to the board, you know? Things are going, long, you expect me to tell you? Wish you not. Get that there. Putting in that. That's it.
No, don't apologize, this is good information, and you were great on time. Other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you, David. You make a tough subject easy to understand, and each time you come in, I'm always wondering what's gonna happen, and I'm really happy to see that you felt that things seem to be going pretty good as far as...
You got a good management here at town.
Yeah.
And your accountant, Mary Beverley, she's a strong accountant.
Yeah.
And she actually, I don't know what she did, but when I entered public economy, I was auditing the town of Parksburg, and she was there, she kind of trained me in some of this.
Yep.
Because her...
May I just...
All part of her version of that?
May I just ask one question? In Berkshire County, what other communities do you do their audits for?
Okay, we'll start from North County, go to South County. I audited town of Williamstown, I audited town of Adams, I audited the town of Stockbridge, I audited the town of Lee, I audited the town of Hancock, I audited the town of Parksburg, I audited the town of Setfield, I just picked them up, and there's one other one in there we missed, but I audited eight towns in total in Berkshire County.
Good.
And, yeah. I also audited the transit authority, so I audited the B R T A, I audited the P E T A, and I also audited school districts. So I do a lot of auditing around, I don't like to do that, and be still taxed. I'm a lawyer, so I enjoy the account jokes or change for us.
Other questions? Okay, okay.
Well, since he everybody...
Thank you.
Nice to see you, thank you again.
Any questions come up, email, there's problems, there's...
I will share your email address with the board.
Madam Chair, as part of this chain conflict, you've...
Yeah.
... said that the budget subcommittee knew the management letter and all the recommendations, and come back with our inputs along with the tournament's inputs, so we don't, by the year go by, we don't respond to that. And also to look into the auditing of the pensions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you. So that brings us to a tax collection update from our treasurer, Kelly Rice, who's on the phone. So Kelly, if you have muted yourself, please unmute yourself.
Done.
Okay, you're, you're good. Member Novak had asked for an update as to how we're doing the tax collections, since things are a little different this year, and we had given some extensions, so just, if you...
The overview is, the collections are only down just a little over 2% from last year at this time, but the demands, because of the extension for payment, the demand's gonna go out until July 10th, and they're not due until Monday, and they are coming in, so... So right now, it's only down a little over 2%, about 2 and 1/2% from last year. Anything else?
Yeah, I know I have a question, but I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the board and see if anyone else has any other questions. Joe, since this was a topic you wanted on the agenda, or do you have any questions with Kelly?
No, I don't, I just wanna see, because this is kind of a first, and I wanted to go in a different direction, and I was outvoted at 2 to 1, and I just wanted to see how things were, we're down 2%, but as Kelly mentioned, things are due when, Kelly?
Monday, the late demands are due Monday, the 27th.
Okay, and my other question, did you get a large response from taxpayers who used the extra time and the benefits that we had put forth about payments?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say a large percentage paid on time, but there was some that, I only got around 15 calls in regards to not being able to pay on time, that I told them about the extension, and they paid by then. They're like, I only wanted a week, but I said, well, you got until June 29th, and the ones that actually questioned me, all paid.
Yeah.
So the ones that, but the other ones, some of them are just, you know, still might have a hard time, but they do have until the 27th.
Okay, and our auditor just really gave you some high marks for your collection, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I've got a question as part of the audit. For taxes receivable, it was $1,36,911. Normally, that would be pretty high, but really, we have one individual that owes most likely around 75 to 80% of that $1 million in taxes.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
You know what the amount they owe at this point?
Uh, no, I did not look that up, sorry.
All right. First of all, 75, David, percent at least of that $1 million.
Oh, yes.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Kelly, I think that's it, unless you had anything else you wanted to bring forward to the board.
Um, I wouldn't mind giving you maybe an update on the transfer station stickers, the pricing. As of today, we're down about 199 stickers from last year, which I honestly don't think is all that bad, but they are still coming in weekly for stickers.
People might still be stuck in March like I am, and not realize it, but the new...
Correct, they're still coming in left and right, so during the week, there's, I'm still putting out another, at least 10 a week since July 1st, so it is still going up, it's going up a lot, and I, it's doing a lot better than I anticipated with the price raise.
And are you still going up there on Saturdays for selling the stickers?
No, I just did it the two weekends before July 1st.
Okay.
And I've been up since.
And it's a good reminder that the paperwork is located on the town's website for people to get the new sticker for this year, as well as a form for people to get their bag tags, so that they can complete that, either mail it in or put it in the Dropbox. I know that that's what I did, is I put everything in Dropbox and put the self-addressed envelope, and you mailed it to me within a couple of days, so it was very easy. So if anybody in the room hasn't gotten their tag, it's a very easy process, so I highly recommend, Mark, there's room, you can sit in here if you'd like.
I do try to pick them out within the, you know, for the day I receive them, getting back in the mail by the next day, so, and I have them self-stamped at the post office, so they stay in town, so they'll get them a lot quicker.
Appreciate that.
Madam Chair, just to make one point, though, Kelly, if we're down that many stickers, that's equal to, if my math is correct, around $15,000 from last year, so I know there's some different circumstances for this year, but that's still a sizable buy. I know we're getting in more stickers and more on the way, but we wanna make this, it's not nothing to do with your department, but just the board should realize that at this point from last year, we're down $15,000, if my math's correct, 75 times 2.
Correct, around there.
Well, yeah, but you have to use last year's number.
Correct.
Whenever that, and then, yeah.
Yeah, we said.
I'm sorry.
That was a good point, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to ask one...
Math mine.
One more quick question, Kelly. Have we ever thought about, because I'd say the later you get into the year, it'd be less likely that people would come in and buy a sticker. Have we ever thought of prorating the price each month that if they didn't get a sticker? So for instance, just hypothetically, when it comes to, let's say, September, for the rest of the year, it could be dropped down to $50, is that anything we've ever thought of doing?
It was discussed, if I'm not mistaken, at their meeting when the waste, the Northern Berkshire Solid Waste started this with, back in, three years ago, four years ago, but I personally don't think that is good, only because for the ones that do their due diligence by getting their sticker for the full year, pay the full price, and then if you do reduce it, people are gonna wait just to get the reduced price, which isn't fair to all the others that pay full price.
Well, I'm thinking if you're gonna have to get rid of your refuge, you can't keep it in your house for three months or anything like that, but that's just a thought, and you're susceptible to, you certainly can't keep them for three months or anything else, you know, that you need to dispose of.
Right, but that is, that is up to the D P W director and the Northern Berkshire Solid Waste, from my understanding. I just collect it, but most people check the office for it.
May I ask, Jim, our, Jim?
He's muted. Jim, you're muted. Thanks.
Jim, just as a question to you, being our representative, has there been ever any talk about prorating, for instance, $75 is the price, but let's say once again hypothetically, September rolls around and somebody comes in, has there been any talk about, you know, the prices go down as time goes, and, you know, time goes, months go by, and people haven't got one, and all of a sudden they wanna pick one up, let's say in September, they probably wouldn't wanna pay the 75. Has there been any talk ever about prorating when months go by?
No, there hasn't, Joe, only because it's gonna create a lot of paperwork and headaches for Kelly and everybody else involved. You know, I mean, you're gonna have people paying $75, people paying $50, it's, it's just not right, I mean, the rate's the rate.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
All right, well, there's nothing else for Kelly. Now we'll move on to the next topic. Kelly, thank you very much for calling in this evening.
Thank you, and you guys have a good night.
Sure, you're more than welcome to stay if you'd like, but cut out, we won't be offended.
Yes.
All right. Yep, the rain is here, so...
Really?
Wow, it really is here. Okay, so that brings us to the August 2020 budget. Once again, we are moving forward with the 112 budget, and that is what has been provided to all of us. The town administrator did send this to us on Monday electronically, it was put in your mailboxes before your packets were put together. Jay, did you wanna highlight anything?
Just that we had great success with July, having the 112 budget approved by the Department of Revenue after the board approved it. Town accountant, Mary Beverley, submitted it to the Department of Revenue, and it was conveniently approved. Just wanna point out that, you know, that's attributed to the amount of time that Mary spent working with the D O R, and actually that we had all of our Ts crossed and I dotted that it was a new process for us, so we didn't wanna go back, as I said to our D O R representative when I spoke with him earlier this week, we didn't wanna reinvent the deal. So the only difference here is the amount of money that we allocated to the different departments, which is based on the payment schedules that we have for those, maintains our current level of staffing, and each department was responsible for submitting their expected expenditures for the month, so we programmed that in, but the bottom line still has to be that 112 number, which is that 1.3 billion that you see all the way to the bottom. And as I said in my communication to you, the only other large ticket item to call your attention is the quarterly payment for the Northern Berkshire vocational regional school district, and as I also said, the local valley regional school district was not prepared to employ since yet, we anticipate that coming next month, but the camp was prepared, was the only large, semi-large ticket item that you see. So anyways, we use the same formula, and we hope to get it approved. Mary was submitted Monday when she comes back.
Any questions for the town administrator? This does require board approval, so what is the board's pleasure with regard to the August 2020 budget that's been presented?
I make a motion, we accept the August 2020 budget.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim. I have a second by Rick. Is there any further discussion?
I recommend as part of the motion that you provide the month of August and fiscal 2021.
Yep, he did say August, but we will say that it is of the fiscal 2021.
Thank you.
Budget, are you okay with that amendment, Jim and Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, is this once again a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. So we will move on to item E under new business, ratification of special police officers. As the board is aware, we did have two recent retirements, and both retirees were interested in being appointed as special police officers in your packet. Just as a reminder, we did include the information from town code about special officers, as well as the job description. So those were just informational pieces for you in preparation for this topic. Happy to see that the interim police chief is here with us. It's my understanding that he was in agreement with the appointment of the special police officers to help with some staffing as it should come up. So we will take these one at a time, I will read the letter that has been put in your packet. Dear Chairman Hoyt, please accept this letter as a request of the Board of Selectmen to appoint Richard W. Tarso Jr. as a special police officer for the Adams Police Department in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 86-5 of the Bylaws of the Town of Adams. Disappointed and contingent upon successfully passing and completing any hiring requirements of the Town of Adams, Chief Tarso will work as needed at the current special police officer grade five, step one rate of $16.64 per hour, respectfully submitted, J R Green, town administrator. Jay, did you want to add anything with regard to this appointment? Chief, okay. Before you, you have the appointment letter for appointing Chief Richard Tarso, Richard Tarso Jr. as a special police officer. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to appoint David Dean as a special police officer.
We're going Tarso first.
I'm making an appointment to appoint Richard Tarso. The way they jumped.
I know, it wasn't, but that's how the letters were in our packet.
To appoint Richard Tarso as a special police officer for the Adams Police Department in accordance with the provisions of 86-5 of the Bylaws of the Town of Adams, at a grade five, step one rate of $16.64 per hour.
I have a motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Jim. Any discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Also in your packet is a letter from the town administrator. Dear Chairman Hoyt, please accept this letter as a request of the Board of Selectmen to appoint David Dean as a special police officer... to appoint David Dean as a special police officer for the Adams Police Department in accordance with the provisions of chapter eighty-six dash five of the bylaws of the town of Adams. Disappointed and contingent upon successfully passing and completing any hiring requirements of the town of Adams, Officer Dean will work as needed at the current special police officer, grade five, step one rate of sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents per hour. Respectfully submitted, J. R. Green, town administrator.
Just as a reminder to the board, this is, uh, per DM at office position, so it's a salary position. They only work as needed and, uh, both, uh, Chief Tarso and Officer Dean did reach out to my office requesting, uh, at the pleasure of the board to be appointed. And, uh, just in my case, this is a good way to keep their institutional knowledge, uh, available to the department, available to the town, and consistent with the job description and intent of the bylaw, uh, at the discretion of, of Chief David, should be needed.
What is the board's pleasure?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint David Dean as special police officer for the Adams Police Department in accordance with the provisions of eighty-six dash five of the bylaws of the town of Adams, um, at, uh, grade five, step one rate of sixteen dollars, sixty-four cents per hour.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Rick. It is a roll call vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. That is unanimous. We will move on to the appointment of, uh, traffic commission member. Um, in your packet, uh, was information from this town code about the makeup of the traffic commission. Um, we did the annual appointment, uh, three, four weeks ago at this point. Um, and one of the vacancies on the traffic commission was a representative from the police department. Um, it was typically held by the police chief. Um, and now that interim police chief Troy Bacon is with us, uh, and he has shown interest in serving in that spot, uh, the traffic commission, uh, this has been put on the agenda this evening to appoint, uh, the interim police chief Troy Bacon to the traffic commission. What is the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to appoint interim Chief Bacon as, onto the traffic commission.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim. A second by Rick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, roll call. Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim? It's a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Congratulations. All right. On the call, we do have, um, council on aging director Erica Trigenti. Um, the next item on the agenda is the ratification of council on aging administrative assistants for Elizabeth Chapman. Uh, I will read the letter that, uh, the town administrator submitted to the board. Dear Chairman Hoyt, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the board's ratification as provided in section ten of the town charter, Elizabeth Chapman has been appointed to the position of part-time council on aging administrative assistant. Ms. Chapman was interviewed for this position earlier this year. Ms. Chapman has extensive experience with accounting, bookkeeping, payroll, and other administrative support work in the private and educational sector. Her experience will be an asset to the council on aging and provide efficient administrative support to Erica and Barbara, allowing them more time to focus on service delivery and programming. If ratified, it is anticipated Ms. Chapman will assume her duties on, for about July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at the clerical bargaining unit, grade five, step one rate of sixteen dollars and sixty-one cents per hour. Respectfully submitted, J. R. Green, town administrator. And Erica, since you've been holding on the line, I'm gonna open it up to you, um, to see if there's anything else you wanted to add about Elizabeth.
Can you hear me? You're breaking.
We can hear you, yes.
Oh, I was just saying, sorry, you're breaking up a little bit.
As you are as well.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, you're breaking up a bit, sorry, that's all. I think the storm is making my internet shoddy. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not hear your question.
Is there anything you would like to add about this appointment of Elizabeth Chapman?
Um, I'll just add that, um, she was a very viable candidate. Uh, in-house utilized.
If you need.
Okay, thank you. Erica, I think, I think we've lost you, so I'm gonna ask Jay and Jean to add.
So, uh, Ms. Chapman was interviewed by myself, Ms. Beverley, and Mr. Trigenti back sometime, uh, beginning in January. The position was filled with, filled with pre-existing staff member of Council on Aging, who was a van driver. But Mr. Trigenti decided to step back into the van driver position, consistent with the provision for the collective, collective bargaining agreement. Chapman was a, a very close runner-up, as Erica was attempting to say. Uh, so to expedite the process by going back into that pool, uh, she, uh, was a recent resident to Adams. We had a lovely conversation about her and her family, why they chose to move here to Adams. She, uh, had pretty significant, so she'd be a good asset.
All right, bye. Okay. Any questions for Jay and possibly Erica, if she can hear us? And I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, uh, you make a motion to ratify the appointment of Elizabeth Chapman.
You are completing now. There are five participants in the meeting.
One agent, at the pay, five, I guess, sixty, sixty-one cents per hour.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a, I have a second by Rick? Any further discussions?
Uh, just a clarification, um, is this a full-time job or just, uh, per DM?
It is part-time, ninety dollars.
Okay, ninety dollars, okay.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
Christine, I just wanted to jump in. I, I dialed in.
Yep.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, my internet is, gets a little, uh, hairy with the, with the weather. I echo everything Jay said. I could hear you guys. Um, I appreciate so far where you are in the ratification process and, uh, and I think it's a good fit for the senior center.
Great, thank you for calling in to add that. All right, uh, it is a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous, Erica.
Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Thank you. Okay. Mark, are you ready to enter? Okay. And, uh, town council, we might need, um, some support on this topic as well. So, um, this board had talked a little bit about the twenty, we talked about twenty twenty tag sales back, I think we were step one of reopening phase two, I think at that point, or an hour later in step one, opening three. Things have changed slightly, um, with regard to the reopening of Massachusetts. Uh, there is definitely an increase in people, uh, holding tag sales, wanting to hold tag sales on an individual basis. Um, we have gone forward with canceling the townwide tag sale. Um, but since this has become a, uh, a large discussion, um, with residents contacting town halls quite a bit, and with code enforcement, building commissioner, uh, as well, uh, having to deal with the tag sales, I thought it was probably appropriate that we might either revisit this topic or at least get an update as to kind of where we are in the, the time it's actually taking, um, confectional purposes to go forward with it. Um, Jay, I know this is something that you had wanted to also talk with the board about. I, I'm going to turn to you, is it, Mark wants to chime in?
I, I think, you know, frame the issue in, in two ways, one, the tag sale permits, et cetera. I don't necessarily think that that's the topic for tonight, inasmuch as I think we just need to have a conversation as to what is the health implications as to whether or not we allow tag sales to happen or not, that's my. I know that Mr. Garner's been spending a lot of time, we've had a lot of inquiries in the office about tag sales. I think we just need to be, get some clarification on the implications of them, if we allow them or if we continue to withhold them. Uh, and then if we, the board does decide to move forward tonight, what communication would the board like to see? Mark put out in terms of how these individuals would conduct themselves? That is, if there's something that we should put attached to the permit requirement that they have to comply with. From my perspective, at a minimum, from a health perspective, if it's allowed, uh, tonight going forward, I think we should at least know the address, you know, Mark addressed that, pardon that pun, but we should at least have the address so we know which, which, uh, properties have these tags. Uh, in case there's, Mark decides to pay them. That's the only input I have.
Marco, open up to you if you wanna chime in on tag sales.
All right, so presently the board, um, has a moratorium mission, and tag sale being held. They're having several, uh, locations that have the can tag sales and some promotions and then not because of code enforcement. Um, I don't know if these individuals are aware that, one, there's a permission currently because of, and two, I don't know if the constituents are aware they have to get permitted and have to go through this board approval, according. So, uh, within the town bylaw, there are some deficiencies within the language. Uh, and then as far as follow-up code enforcement, so, uh, so, so I guess the presentation is, does this board want to continue the moratorium on, on that bill? Or do you want to extend that and then educate communities as far as product or public to want to have?
So I open it up for discussion for the board, or any questions for Mark or Jay?
Listening committee would say that in regards to knowing there's a moratorium on and that they need a permit, they don't. Of course, that's the sitting.
So I, I should also add, uh, the latter part of the body, there's a group that every year has a flea market, uh, for their own, um.
Is it fundraiser or?
Well, no, it's, it's, uh, ham radio operators. So, so what they do is they charge admission, you have to register for it. And they sell two each of the ham radio operators in town, you know, spoken to the public. But notwithstanding, presently, there's a prohibition against tag sales or markets. As it is now, I, I told them to go ahead and advertise and like how we can do this, you know, allow it. Um, the state has allowed tag sales to resume, um, and again, it's something that this board can regulate. And so if you want to extend, uh, that regulation, go ahead and do the education. General have to do the education regardless, um, but it would be a more complex, um, education.
With the moratorium still in place?
Yes.
Okay. Rick, did you have comments? It seemed like you were about to say something. Okay. Okay. Other questions? This part of the, this stage of the reopen, phase three?
With, I'm sure, restrictions.
No, actually, this is one thing where there are more restrictions. However, these, uh, local jurisdictions, we can implement, uh, mandated restrictions.
So what would be the effort by the inspections department if we, board did decide to allow tag sales to recommence?
Oh, the initial point contact is set up for the application. And then that can, um, uh, then the application with, uh, non-specific value guidelines.
So those are the standards and guidelines that have been set by the state for offices and?
That's, that's not such a specific, so you do have those guidelines. We have, that has, um, and so you can just create the denim to the application. And again, the thing is, if you're aiding the community, supporting more paper or on the website, that they have to obtain permits in order to have a tag sale. And what is the language of the, of the bylaw is that they can have before no more than four consecutive days of choice here. So that's the legislation. Actually, I was thinking, maybe Jared will offer you, um, and he can have that. He can have that application with them, or what they call, uh, wildlife.
I see Hillary's on the phone. Was I mistaken all these years? I thought that permits came out of the town clerk's office.
With zoning regulation.
Sure, and I.
What was that, Jim?
I said, I, I agree. I thought permits came out of the town clerk's office. I thought they were like five dollars for a weekend.
Town clerk is saying no.
It's two dollars, uh, for the first permit, five dollars, um, for the next permit within that county year. And again, they're restricted more than two a year, from the perfect second dates for each tag sale. And that goes to the board, so that's two dollars.
Yep. Other questions, comments?
Yes, um.
Yes, and Joe?
I, the governor certainly supersedes what the board does. I mean, we, we do seem, you know, mandate our own things, but I think it is important that people do pay the minimum and if we, that way we'll have a better feel for. Folks, there's, and another pet peeve I have is, once again, these are, uh, uh, he had his tapes down, Arch Street Street, down the alley there. He uses packaging tape and he puts it around and around those poles. You, you can't get it off easily and if you start to get it off, it peels paint and, you know, so there's, you know, there's just things that should be done that, you know, makes it fair for everybody.
Right, so, such a one twenty-five with the town bylaw does give us enforcement authority at fifty dollars a pop, okay? So we first issue a notice to them, if they're still not compliant, we'll.
Now, at what aspect are we speaking about? They didn't get a permit or didn't remove the sign?
Well, there's no requirement then to remove the sign, however. Uh, again, you know, as they discussed previously, there's deficiencies with the bylaws from areas you find there is with physical reporting, so here and now we'll present, um, to the, to the working group, ahead of the town meetings, a, a track by law, um, responsibility.
So if the board decided this evening to allow tag sales to reconvene, uh, following the protocol that we had in place prior to Arch and COVID, uh, virus, what would be the impact on you and your office?
Just staying within that box. They would hopefully make the application to get up and then it would come before this board for its approval, um, not going outside that box, um, to the. Not going outside that box, maybe to the bigger box. If you wanted COVID protocols put in place, like now is issued, maybe a public order.
And town administrator?
My thoughts are, at this point, as you can see, COVID-19 and our obligation to keep the public health in our mindset requires a bit of time on administrative assistance on that. Require time on Mark and Jerry. And that is one of the reasons why we have a permit fee structure when people apply for these permits as regulated by the bylaw. The board can set those fees. Those fees are usually set because there's an administrative cost to allowing the behavior to go. Excuse me, the behavior to, the action to take place because there's some regulatory action to take place, which is what we just talked about. It'll be my recommendation that perhaps the board wants to take a look at that schedule and determine if two dollars is sufficient to cover that. Or if you want to increase a little bit more in light of the fact that there is a demand on, on staff time. I know Attorney St. John is on the call, he can certainly correct procedure. But I would make a recommendation that if we want to allow them to happen, to comply with, with the tax that the state allows it, maybe comply with whatever. Excuse me, be consistent with states, be consistent with other communities. But there is a little bit of a, of a burden here on the public health side of the house, if you want to revisit, maybe revisit that, that policy.
Another aspect to consider is, is any kind of transmission of the addition of tax sales. At all, whereas other communities have seen their numbers increase, as has that, as of now, okay? So, when people, doing tag sales, they can come from other communities. So that's something else to consider, whether or not you want to make that more important, is that we're doing things right, you're not. We got the strongest orders, we got the total orders out. And in other communities, they rely on what the governor has said. So we are able to talk about, you know, if you know a community who responds or a community who's replaced orders. Challenged by a national retailer or a regional retailer, so we're doing these right.
From an enforcement perspective, the board is. The police partner could be asked to keep their eyes open for those properties that have them and just do a little bit of a better job communicating the fact there's a moratorium. And it's for a public safety, public health basis. And the board will continue to review that decision as we evolve through COVID-19 timeline. That's, that's one option. Because at the end of the day, it comes down to an enforcement issue. It's a communication issue and it's an enforcement issue. I think the police are not necessarily necessarily want to have to do that, but they're the best ones that are out there. How about in the community, they see it, they can certainly stop and have a conversation, informational conversation. Why you can't have it, this is what the procedure is, et cetera. So, there's a way to allow it, there's a way to allow it that requires staff time. Mark's point, you know, for me is well taken. On the flip side of this is also the amount of time that the staff spends trying to regulate tag sales and actually trying to regulate a lot of stuff that we normally don't regulate. So, but that's my, my perspective.
But there's been a, a few things brought up this evening with regards to the bylaw and maybe some amendments to the bylaw or some changes. I'm wondering if, at our like August 5th meeting, would be two weeks from now, if maybe you and Jerry would be able to present kind of what you think would be the bylaw changes, obviously that would have to go to town meeting. So we wouldn't be able to implement them, but it might be a good educational opportunity for all of us to better understand the bylaws and the possible changes. But also maybe help the community know what might be coming. And that might be a healthy discussion to have before maybe making this decision, that's my own opinion. But I'm open to hearing what the rest of the board might say. Rick, go ahead.
Now, when we actually formally, a bylaw change, I thought I had to go to planning.
Well, not, not all bylaws, but you're talking about zoning bylaw, which could or, and Ed can jump in if he wants. But I would believe that the town can craft a separate bylaw that regulates the signage that's separate from the zoning. I mean, you have it, you can live within zoning or it can live separate. It's just a question of the enforcement mechanism, how the warrant is drafted for the article.
Town council unmuted himself, so I think he's ready to answer.
Yeah, I was just waiting for a pause and reaction. So, right now it's a zoning bylaw, so if you were looking to amend that, to amend that, Mr. Blanchard's right, you'd have to go through the planning board. But Jay is also correct in that a separate bylaw could be created, not under zoning, but under the town code to address procedural issues with respect to these permits. I also wanted to add something like in the interim, the board, the board of selectmen has the ultimate authority to issue permits. And. Things happening or not happening, for example, it's obviously public property and shouldn't be done without the consent of the selectmen. And the people receiving permits should be aware of it, as well as any other conditions that you want to use. That's something that could be easily drafted and could be given to the app, look in, when the permit is right or.
Thank you, Ed. Yes, I could, I, it struck me what Mark said, we're zero on COVID. And once again, as you mentioned, people will be coming from, you know, out of town and, and, you know, it's, everything's speculative in this. And who's going to be, you know, say that people are going to, you know, rush out and they're not going to have masks on? People like to be the first ones there and, you know, they're intermingling with one another. And their mind is more on, you know, grabbing something from the tag sale, I think, more than worrying about COVID-19. But a lot of people in Adams, coming from a community that's really poverty-driven, a lot of people use the tag sales to make a little extra income, you know? So, it, it's touch and go, but I think the important fact right now is that we're zero with COVID. I, I would think, I mean, just news today, town in the eastern part of the state, there was a party. And, you know, all of a sudden they got seven new cases, so it's just, you know, maybe a hiatus for this year. Or as the chairman mentioned, maybe, you know, August 5th have a, you know, you could draft something together. Because it's always, at least in my opinion, the problem is, is being everywhere at one time. And, you know, it just takes somebody who's, you know, asymptomatic and around people and, you know, but. I don't know how you can solve problems like that, there's just really no way to do it.
Jim, you heard your hand raised and my apologies that I didn't see you waving it at me wildly. Go ahead with your comment.
I couldn't hear all the comments, so I'm not sure if this has already been touched on. But I really truly believe that there should be a list of things that can be sold and things that can't be sold at tag sales. And, you know, and it's going to be tough to enforce because our code enforcement officers work Monday through Friday. And these tag sales happen on a weekend. So somehow or another, we've got to have somebody out there just take a ride by and monitor what's going on.
So, so with that scenario, are you talking about presently while the moratorium is in effect? Or you mean if the board rescinds the moratorium?
I, I, I really truly believe that it should be year-round, excluding COVID-19. I think that, that the, the rules that can be sold at tag sales have to be enforced and monitored, you know? God only knows what people are going to put out there.
Does anyone on the board wish to put back and place tag sales at this point? If so, I would need a motion. Otherwise, we would continue with the moratorium and we can revisit.
I was thinking about it earlier now, for fresh air, I love a lot of money. I mean, zero. While I don't like seeing it in a bank account, I do like seeing it in something like this. So, I'm offering the employees.
John has comments?
So, in regards to the bylaws, which I agree with Joe, that the size, you know, that's great, we'll have that discussion, we're going to do the warrants. It's going to take time, we don't even know when the town meeting is going to be, maybe, maybe when the snow flies, who the heck knows? So, that can be done on a separate meeting and talk about how much the cost will be to do a, to get a permit. Yes, we can go through all that, we can change the cost at any time, that's our prerogative to do so. In regards to tag sales, you know, I've gone to Pittsfield, I've gone to South Colony, you know, I'm sure most of us have done that. And we've traveled within our colony here, possibly over to New York or Vermont, we can't get to Maine. And I'm not sure if somebody from Florida or Georgia is going to come up for one of our tag sales. So, I'm not, you know, I'm concerned as everybody else is concerned about coronavirus. Being concerned about somebody coming from somewhere to purchase something, I don't know where it come from for a tag sale. So, but I just want to put that in there, it's, it's just, that's all I have to say.
I mean, you know, we've got the symptom, people are selling things online, one-on-one sale. So, you know, we can rewind to sell there, where's this other happens, which is true. I know Jerry was in favor of removing the moratorium.
I don't know if I'm hearing a motion to change our opinion at this point. So, I think I've given it time to have a motion and I didn't hear one. So, why don't we plan for a lengthier discussion?
All right, we just discussed on purposes of, for health.
That is correct. They have a public hearing, yes, so maybe we can, we'll talk about when it would be appropriate. Yep, because that is correct, there's a public hearing on the debacle regulations. I know it's something that's taking some time from your office to prepare for that as well, okay?
Chairman, since this was on the agenda, does it need to be tabled?
I don't believe so. So, along the same lines, the governor has lifted the suspension of the plastic bag ban for communities that have a plastic bag ban in their community, I'm losing my words. So, in your packet, we did put in the plastic bag reduction bylaw, which does have the administration office under the board of selectmen. I also included the article that came out from MMA about the governor's lift of the suspension. And in there, it did highlight some communities that have delayed the enforcement of the plastic bag ban to a later date. Some of this is to give, our local retailers had to adjust, they've had to purchase plastic bags in order to comply with reopening guidance that was put forward when we couldn't use the reusable bags. And so, in order to let some of those retailers deplete their supply, some of these communities have put this off, the enforcement off until. I think it's Newton is September 1 and Boston and Brookline are waiting until October 1. I think that there are some other health considerations that those communities have taken into place with a comfort level of whether or not that community is comfortable bringing the reusable bags in. But for us is really, I guess, whether or not we're going to have the enforcement, like as of today or whenever. But, I don't know, Mark, I can turn this over to, or Jay.
I can, I can bring this to you very quickly. So, the plastic bag reduction bylaws have especially been back into place because the governor's order has been rescinded that had been tolling the municipal base. As Christine was articulating, it is now up to the individual municipalities, they want to be able to resume enforcement of the reduction bylaw or if we want to toll that for a period of time. I believe the reasons for tolling. The prohibition gives us some time to use up that stock. So as Christine said, some communities that we've seen have gone 30 days. Et cetera, it's a case-by-case basis, I really don't know which businesses have been using plastic bags at this point. Other than perhaps a couple, you know, we have a lot of takeout right now at our restaurants. I took, I got takeout today, I utilized a bag in order to do that provided by the restaurant. And I know our supermarket is doing the same, so I don't know, Mark, would your recommendation be the order?
So, so the order was rescinded on July 10, here we are on the 22nd. I have not received a single complaint from the community that any particular satirism is using plastic bags. Nor have I gone out to an establishment to see if they are using, other than. A moratorium enforcement, so that any retailer could go off that supply. I've used some other experiences in Herschel County. Don't give that any consideration if it anticipate another surge that we may revert back to. So, all paid into it, I'm not concerned about it.
I remember rescinding that order, I grabbed my bags every time I was going shopping. They were so sexy, I couldn't use them. And the clerk said there was a exposure policy for their safety, they don't have to handle.
My bags.
Yeah, so there's some recommendations too about reusable bags. And I see those and I share those with the board. But, but again, I'm not, I haven't run out there and said, we think that we're not allowing reusable bags, nor have I gotten them.
Yes.
So, thinking of that, Karen said, I would like to, to place a moratorium on the enforcement of the plastic bag ban until further notice, or until this work changes.
Okay, until further notice, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I would second it by Jim, is there any?
Yeah, I'd like to say I'm going to vote against it. I, I don't believe in plastic bags whatsoever, and I thought that was a good step we took environmentally, be one of the early communities to do it. If, if we put a time span on it, I'd be more comfortable, but indefinitely, I, I don't like the terminology. If, if we put a time span on it, I'd be more comfortable, but indefinitely, I don't like the terminology. And I just, I, I'm gonna vote against it if, if it's indefinitely. I'm not for plastic whatsoever. It does, it's not biodegradable. It does a lot of harm to wildlife and, you know, and things. So I, I'm gonna vote against it. I just, I'm not a plastic man. I was glad to see that we got paper and we're using, you know, bags that you could bring back in, but. So I just wanted to voice my opinion early, honey.
I will also vote no against this motion. It's been going, you know, it's been over almost two weeks now. There hasn't been any complaints or any problems to this point. So why not let it continue as is? I believe the supermarket is offering bags free instead of the 10 cents they were before, is what I've heard. I can't guarantee that.
They are.
They are, right. So they made an adjustment, so you can use the paper bags. So I will vote no to, to keep the bylaw as is because there is no complaints and no one has come to us with any concerns. So let it, let it stay as it is.
However, if you do receive a complaint, do you then have to enforce the bag ban? And possibly enforce?
Yes. I think too, that in the past, the people that are using like plastic bags or takeout places, 'cause I know sometimes if I go, I won't mention the establishment, I get something that doesn't get all over you. So they use plastic bags, that's the only place that I've seen them and they don't use it for all the food stuff, depending on what's there. But I'd like to see people get back to paper bags as soon as possible.
Now, just to clarify, I'm not saying that, that the establishments have already.
Yeah, right, yeah.
This is a point too, there, even though there are no complaints, if you go into the store, effectively, you have to enforce them. If we don't put a moratorium, not, not enforce.
Which is how we deal. Like, or, like he's done in the past, so what has changed?
What I mean is, right now, nobody's complaining that, say, they're using plastic bags. But in his job requirements, if we don't do this, when he goes in there, he's gotta cite them for using plastic bags.
Which he's been doing for as long as he's been on the job.
Well, because there was a, a moratorium place on enforcement. By the governor.
Yeah, other things. Like I said, no shortage.
Jim, you have a comment?
Yes, I, I misunderstood the motion. I, I am against plastic bags. I, I thought it was just for what the governor said. I, I wanna rescind my second.
Yeah, what's that? Yes, you did second. Yep, okay. We don't have a second.
I'm sorry, I was indisposed.
So, in reusable bags, I guess if the establishment will allow them in, are they in hurry?
This order remains in effect. Then a store like Adams Supermarket has to offer another alternative, which would be paper.
Correct.
That, and it's always up to code enforcement's discretion when they go and they investigate the issue. Mark could find it or Mark could just have an informational conversation, move on. The most important tool of any, whether it's law enforcement or code enforcement, is always discretion. And that remains, to John's point, that Mark had. And he'll make that, this board says, I have six bags left. Mark's discretion, have the informational conversation, et cetera. I think from my perspective as town administrator, we just wanna be consistent and we wanna be clear what our communication is to our business.
I think it's gonna be incumbent on us to let people know that, you know, we want to go back to paper. 'Cause how they, how are they going to know unless they're told?
Well, because the establishment, I'm not sure, already started using.
Well, Dollar General, I was just in there a few days ago and they gave me plastic.
Where?
Dollar General.
It's your first complaint.
Well, they might just be unaware of, you know, they, they might have heard what the plastic is. Yeah, okay.
When they used bags before, they can return them to corporate.
So if there's no action to take, we'll move on.
I'd like to, just one quick thing, I wanna thank Mark. I stopped in, I think it was Friday, and I told him about the deplorable condition of Dollar General, their medium grass strip in their garden. Because some years ago, I had to call the corporate headquarters to have them look at and do something about it because it's on our main thoroughfare. So I brought it to Mark's attention. I want, believe you went down and the next day it looked as pretty as a picture, so.
I think we had that thing that he was done last year, didn't we?
They have, they have the money to do it. So it, it looks quite a bit better, so thanks. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mark.
So we'll move on to department reports. Town administrator.
So today, myself and Chief Bacon participated in the Massachusetts Police Training Committee Monthly Meeting, where they handled exemption to Massachusetts required training as well as temporary waivers for other officers. And I'm pleased to report that the board voted unanimously to exempt Chief Bacon from the Massachusetts Academy requirement, so we don't have to send him away for 18 weeks for basic approved training. We have a little bit more information gathered from MPTC, but that was a significant step and I think it's, I don't wanna speak for the committee, but the chief and I participated in it and they did a very thorough job relating the chief's resume. And I'd like to think that Adams was represented well simply by Chief Bacon's resume and experience, so, so we're continuing to get Chief Bacon ingrained with Addison certified as a police officer. We continue to look at a few new businesses that are interested here in the town of Adams. So I always like to report out on that we do have some, you know, small business commercial interests in some locations. I did have a conversation with our state representative this week. We had an excellent conversation regarding Graylock Lynn, her date. Somewhat hoping that we have a group eight one-time allocation in that transportation bill. We don't think it's in there, we're not surprised based on the financial condition that we have. But we had a good conversation till Keith has dialed for available funds to hit that section of the roadway. On the season, I had a conversation too about perhaps advancing that project a little further through the NPO process, just to get that out in depth. So we're still working on those issues. Tobacco regulations, as was mentioned by code enforcement officer Blaisel. I'd like to encourage the board to make sure that you please take time and read those proposed regulations. The Board Health has the obligations for the public health of the community. But also in my experience as chairman of the Board Health of Pittsfield, I learned that there was a pretty significant cross-section between economic development and business desiring to use tobacco as a source of revenue for business, justified business. So we definitely, I would encourage the Board of Selectmen to please participate in that process, review those, those regulations and ensure that if we have businesses that wanna come to town that use tobacco, are indifferent, that perhaps there's a provision in there to allow the Board Health to take those conditions into consideration. So I simply ask, can I take a look at those rights and please participate in that public hearing on August 17th? I think it's incumbent upon me, as town administrator, to try to look at those things and encourage the collaboration between the two boards. Cheshire, town administrator and I, we attempted to have lunch today. We weren't able to do that, but Ed has informed me that he believes Cheshire's gonna probably set a town meeting date for September 15th. So as I've been dropping hints, Budget Subcommittee, they wanna have a conversation at some point about maybe having to plan to move ahead. Renter, of course, he, you know, he's one man of many and he didn't, he wasn't really able to provide much more guidance than what we've been reading in MMA. And he's well aware of the implications that we have with the state aid reduction, but it's impossible to predict what that reduction will be. It's impossible to predict what the federal government will allow us to use CARES Act money to substitute for revenue loss, of which we anticipate being that state aid number. So just FYI, we may have to move ahead with the town meeting. And I will probably ask the Budget Subcommittee to meet and begin to take a look at where we could potentially, how much to reduce by and where we could. So I bring it up just as a, as a talking point to be ready for. Adam Chairman, I don't know if you were gonna speak about the latest ABCC advisory. The ABCC Alcohol Beverages Control Commission advisory is now about any establishment that is licensed for on-premise selling of alcohol and now sell mixed drinks for off-premise consumption. Some guidelines in terms of packaging, et cetera, but that is now passed. The governor signed that, I believe, just July 20th. He signed it, so that is important to get out to our establishments to let them know. In terms of staffing and hiring, we've built up a pool to fill the financial assistant position in the treasurer collector's office. We'll be doing those interviews probably in the next week or two. That will be at this time, a non-benefited, part-time, 19-hour position, consistent with other support staff positions. With the opportunity down the road, when it is, those other positions are restored full-time, that position too. So we anticipate the ratification coming to you probably sometime in August. And Chief Bacon and I spoke today about doing the same thing with a pool of patrolmen. As you know, we have three vacancies in the police department based on the overtime rate right now. So we're looking to hire a number of officers, lateral, existing patrolmen from other communities that already attended the academy, which will simply require us to field train these officers. And that would be a topic for the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting, reviewing for further information on staffing in the police department. That is all I have for this evening.
Quite a bit. Any questions for the town administrator off of his report?
Well, it's not off of his report, it's just something, I see that Pan Am is up for sale. Now, will that have any effect on the scenic rail? Can, can our group advise it, say, well, we don't wanna allow the scenic rail? Is that something that we should be concerned about?
Not at this time, but it is an outside possibility. The agreement that Berkshire scenic has to operate the excursion passenger service is with the state of Massachusetts. So unless the state of Massachusetts chooses to terminate or Berkshire scenic chooses to terminate that contract, they cannot. The freight rights are held by Pan Am Railways, who once owned the line. They kept those freight rights, the easement, even though the state owns the physical property, Pan Am doesn't. So we don't anticipate that, but I know the Berkshire scenic organization is monitoring that. And thank you, Joe, for mentioning that, because railroad isn't exactly on anyone's radar. But the state of Massachusetts has spent a tremendous amount of time and money over the past few months working on the Adams branch. And as everyone knows, both Holland and Special Steel Minerals, two large employers, depend on freight, rail freight to keep efficiency. I wrote a letter of support for Holland for industrial rail access grant. They're looking to expand freight, again freight act, if this would be their second one. So I wrote a support letter from them. The state has surfaced the line. They have changed out rail ties and they've done a tremendous amount of work for the state to repair. That's all state money that, that's one of our largest suppliers. So I just wanted to make that point and I apologize for not actually bringing that up. So thank you, Jim.
My last question is, I see some work going on down at the corner near Memorial School, what Rick alluded to. Is that Grand Street? Okay, I was kinda wondering what that was going on.
That's the grand, that's the grand street improvement, improvement project. I spoke about it today. I think there'll be an opportunity for the board to get together with that neighborhood at some point, early fall, early autumn.
Reason I ask is because it looks like they took a lot of rubble out of there. A lot of curvings and things that must have been just buried in there or something. I wasn't sure, so that is part of that. Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Any other questions for the town administrator? Jim, go ahead.
I have a comment. Jay was talking about the Board of Health Special Meeting concerning the sale of tobacco products in the town. I encourage all people in the town of Adams to attend this. It's very important. It's gonna discourage businesses from opening, 'cause they can't open within, I think it's 500 feet of each other. They're selling tobacco products. And people have to support the town as we, as I am in, hopefully, as selectmen are.
All right, thank you for your comment, Jim. Anything else? Town council. Again, this reminds me that I didn't print the report sometime for today's meeting.
Okay, well, that's all right. Since my last report on July 15th, I began working on a pilot agreement for the Barrett House. I reviewed and signed town contracts. I responded to a request for advice from a code enforcement officer and I reviewed and commented upon the national.
Any questions for town council? There are none. You're off the hook now. Thank you. That brings us to Subcommittee and Liaison Report. So Derek, on the end of the table, Joe.
Yes, I attended, well, it was via telephone, Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership Group. And we're putting together a subcommittee to tweak our bylaws and we're also putting together a subcommittee to pick a nonprofit group to administer the funds that we anticipate having. And I was asked to serve on that board to help choose a nonprofit to work with us. And eight communities out of the 16 that are in the partnership, put in for grants that we received last year. And I know Donna put in and they'll be awarding $20,000 to the eight communities. That will be on the list. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Rick?
No actual report, but in preparation for a very upcoming subcommittee, I just wanted to thank Chief Bacon for quickly setting it up. Officer Terrell, I guess, pretended to be on the ride along yesterday. It was good.
Very good.
Glad to have you. Thank you for bringing all of this.
Yeah, I put it back on some Saturday night, though. Busy time, so it's been.
Good for you.
Excellent. John?
I attended through Zoom the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission Executive Committee and also the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission Full Committee Meeting. Our delegate from the planning board, Mrs. Cazaloy did show, which is, which is great. She's the delegate and I'm the alternate to the BRPC Full Commission. A lot of it, with the executive committee, it's a lot of end-of-year type things we're finally getting to. Reviewing Tom, the executive director. Also, we, the BRPC Full Commission voted on the officers again. It's the same set as we did. I'm still the vice chair of the BRPC, so nothing's changed there. The NPO, which I have an action to back to Joe on, that's meeting on Tuesday.
All right, thank you, John. All right, thank you, John. Announcement? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. Committee update.
Our banners for fallen heroes are up. A lot of hard work. I really want to thank Brian Carroll, graphic designer, Jamie Callahan, John Moyer, John Bordeaux. Geez, I can't remember everybody. George Hadad for approaching me and spearheading this project. I think it makes me proud to ride down through Park Street and see this. And I've had nothing but compliments. I think it's a great thing for the town. The townspeople are very receptive to it. It's great to have positive phone calls instead of negatives. Also, I want to thank Chief Bacon for putting up the pedestrian crossing signs again. That was a pet peeve of mine. We purchased them. They weren't up very long. They're taken down and stored away. I think it's important to have them out there, and kudos to him for taking, by the horn, putting them back out. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So we'll go to announcements and go by the order. Joe?
Yeah, this is to you, Jim. I think that those banners look great, and I've had a lot of people commenting on how nice they look. And I think that they're a lot nicer than I thought they would be. And some people ask, though, I know that you can't put everybody's up there, are there gonna be rotations of it if other people who were in the service and were killed in action? Will there be a rotation of pictures, someone asked me?
I don't know if there'll be a rotation of pictures, Joe, because right now, they're running alphabetically. But we do have, we do have blank poles there. And unfortunately, people are gonna keep on getting killed in wars, and we will be honoring them. And if anybody approaches us from the past, because now that they see what it's all about, I'm sure we're gonna hear more from people. We do have room for them also.
Okay, thanks, Jim, and you did a great job.
Thank you, Joe. It's not only me. I had a great committee.
Yeah, well, that's what it takes, a little teamwork. Also, I was kind of saddened to hear of Donna's impending retirement. Now, I don't know, should I...
I don't think it's public.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. Don't prove that. Oh.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, because...
It's recorded meeting, but...
Well, the thing was, is that, you know, I thought when I received the letter that, you know, it was probably made known, but I'll stop there.
Was known to the board that that's something that we'll be working on, but it's my understanding, Donna did not want that to be public at this time.
Okay, it wasn't made specific on the letter.
When it was sent to you, it wasn't known either, Joe.
Okay.
Advised late this afternoon, please don't make it public.
Okay.
As meeting.
Yeah. And then, lastly, the town common is really progressing at a nice rate. And before you know it, the statue of Susan Dance will be put into place. And I was able to get a donation of concrete for the footing where the statue will be placed. It saved us $900 for the 7.3 cubic yards. And so that money can be put toward other things that we might not have had enough money for. So once again, a lot of things going on in town. So I'm looking forward to the statue coming in and the completion of that job. I think it's really gonna spruce up our downtown, along with the other things that are happening along Route 8. And I did have another question that just came to me, but I'm not gonna bring it up right now. I'll stop in and see you, Jay, about it.
Joe, about the statue, do we have a date as to when it will be arriving?
August 23rd, I believe.
Okay, that's when it will arrive or be installed?
Be installed. Is that correct, Ed? Ed?
We haven't heard yet about a date, Joe.
Okay.
And wire on mute is be advised that Becky Ferguson and I spoke today. She's gonna reach out to Pam, so there can be some collaboration, additional collaboration with the sculpture now that they're getting closer to needing the pinpoint date. So be, let your lovely wife know that that call is coming.
I will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rick, announcement?
Nothing.
Okay, John?
I also want to thank Jim Bush and George Hadad, and all the volunteers from the Legion, and also the entities that provided funding for this project, including the Adams Cooperative Bank, and the company that put the banners up also, no cost. And also, one more is the town itself, and making it happen. So it was a great project. It had a little work together, and it's a great, it's great to see Golden Park Street. The last thing is, Jay, that our friends, the weeds up at the solar field up by the, by the transfer station.
Wind is obvious.
Yeah, the old poison is hogweed. We're taking volunteers, but, just kidding. And it's just starting to get, you know, starting to grow as they go by there, and, you know, it could lose a penny.
I took it right by. Definitely not as bad as it was last year.
Right, not too bad.
I noticed what was interesting, on the northern section, it seemed to be stronger than it was on the southern. So, Ed, maybe you can reach out, see where the...
The mirror will help recall more.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks, Joe.
That's all I have, Ed, Jim.
Okay. So just two items. Just a reminder to the board that there are services for Skip Harrington on Friday. If you are able to attend, the family has apps that board members try to attend. As we have done with before, when former selectmen has passed the bay, we have ordered the flags lowered on Friday, the day of the service. We did order them to be lowered at the time of his passing, and had indicated that we would lower them when a service could be held. So they will be lowered on Friday, just so we're all aware. And then, lastly, just as a housekeeping item, if you did not sign in, in the hallway before this meeting, please make sure that you do sign in and indicate that you are in the building today, and indicate that you are here for the selectmen's meeting. There are some items to be discussed. We have a minute here. And do you have the copy of the national grid agreement for signature? Okay, so we will need to sign that as well. And then next Wednesday, we do have a workshop at 6:00 PM. We have a presentation by Tag and Bond that is on the agenda, so we'll get more information to the board about that. But it is 6:00 PM.
Myself, Director Tover, Superintendent Rumpel, and Chief Mechanic Gary will be going down to the Pittsfield Sewer Treatment Plant. We'll be meeting with our engineers, and we'll just be getting a quick overview of their plan, what upgrades have been done, so we can network with the plant operators there and familiarize ourselves with what may have to be done with our plant. So Wednesday will be wastewater treatment day for us.
Okay. Jim, did I skip over you for announcements and go by the order?
Nah, I don't believe so, Christine.
Okay. I can't remember these dates. All right, so if there's nothing else to come before the board, I will go ahead and ask you to motion to adjourn. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Second, can we forego the roll call and just say aye if you're a favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. You all have a good night.